Item B under new business was Resolution 2722.
The Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, shall amend Resolution Number 2482 to change the minimum fund balance for the NSI fund balance and general fund to four million dollars.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes. Yes. Item is approved.
I have received Resolution 2723. The Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the advancement of the state's salary supplement payments for eligible firefighters and police officers.
Something you've always known, so a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Item is approved. Item D, Resolution 2724.
The Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving bids for the purchase of soccer uniforms since 2017 through 2018 indoor soccer season.
Motion to approve the low bid.
Second question. We have a motion to accept a low bid, which was Crown Sports. We have a second.
My question is, it says uniform. It may be uniform as a shirt or shorts. So are we going to be coming back with another bid of shorts? And are we going to buy 2,000 shirts or 1,000 shirts?
No, sir. It says indoor soccer uniform shirt bid.
Okay. So are we going to come back with a pair of shorts?
No, sir. It's a uniform shirt.
No, we're not going to have shorts.
That's what I said, no shirts.
Are we going to buy two shirts? I mean, 2,000 shirts or 1,000?
I hope we have 2,000. Because that means that's how many people we signed up to soccer.
We get 2,000, we get 4,000.
I would go get 4,000.
Yeah.
Plus we'll make room for money.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Item is approved. Item D, Resolution 2725.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to approve the attached change order request AMIC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure, Inc., in regard to the reconfiguration project of the I-75 interchange Ringel Road at exit one.
Okay, we ran into some unsuitable soil that needed to be excavated out. This is in that portion of the connection of Camp Jordan Parkway to Ringel Road. Prior was pretty much drainage basin, grassy basin. That needs to be excavated three feet below just a grade. We need to line out the geotextile fabric. And that filled with class B riprock, which is very large rock. As big as baseball and footballs. Twenty-one hundred tons is estimated. Additional cost to this is eighty-four thousand six sixty-three. Now, we're talking both the contractor and the engineer. And that would be a non-perceived number of eighty-four thousand six sixty-three. The additional work provides overall structural integrity to the road. If it's not done, I would say within a short amount of period of time. Dirt is not taken out and replaced by either rock. We're going to start seeing pressure result years ahead.
Motion approved.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
The guy that we hired to oversee this?
Yes, sir.
He didn't oversee the course avenue? Or did we have it course avenue on that side of the highway? Because I know we had it on the south side because I've seen it before. But I've never seen it on the north side over there where the road was.
Okay. I talked to the engineer who worked on this, Vaughn and Milton. This would have been the geotechnical services. They were included in their proposal. However, they only used the geotechnical services or floor boring testing for the mass poles only. And I will read you quote unquote. Since the project area was a previously developed interchange for an interstate that by all indications to us appeared to be well drained, nobody anticipated encountering unsuitable soils. They made that determination not to proceed with geotechnical on the area.
I know better than you, Vaughn. You know?
I know.
It's like the rain we've had. We keep the rain afloat now because it's unsuitable soil down there. Even though it's got concrete drains and paths go through there, has to be a point that we shouldn't have paperies or all of it. I think we need to go back after the engineers or the overseers.
We're looking into that now.
Because I don't want to hold a project.
I'm not. I took it upon myself.
It paid eighty-four thousand dollars for that, though.
No, I took it upon myself after talking to all of you Saturday morning at 12:30, I called the engineer up and told him to proceed because I don't want to hold up on this. This work has to be done.
I agree.
And I'm upset that it wasn't done because typically when new roadways are constructed, geotechnical services are used for force actions. That's all instances. Now, you can sit there and say, yes, a good part of that reconfiguration was previously insisted payment of the on or off rates to I-75 as well as for the road. However, that connection made from Camp Jordan Parkway, where the street comes in, Mass Road, to Ringel Road is new roadway. There's never been a road there before. That area should have been geotechnical. That area should have been force actions made with that soil. That's my assessment. I'm an engineer. I've been doing this. And it wasn't done. So I'm working with the city attorney on what our path is.
I know when you take force actions, you go down so far, you change the type of soil. And if you take your force action, you go down, when you hear rock, you watch rock. So the nation knows this.
Well.
That's about any number.
I'm looking to pursue what part of this because I do feel that their reasoning was not bad. Their project has moved forward. They're working seven person week. Okay.
So we do have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. That item is approved. We've already dealt with item F. So we move to item G, the grant consent agenda with Resolution 2727, Resolution 2728, Resolution 2729, and Resolution 2730.
2727, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the application for and acceptance of the TMO Property Conservation Machine Grant for fiscal year 2018. Resolution Number 2728, a resolution of the City Council for the City of East Ridge approving the application for and acceptance of the Fire House Subs fiscal year 2018 grant for the East Ridge Fire Department. Resolution Number 2729, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for and acceptance of Fire House Subs fiscal year 2018 grant for the East Ridge Police Department. Resolution Number 2730, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the application for and acceptance of the Tennessee State Library and Archives Department the State Training Opportunities for Public Grant Program.
Motion approved. I'd like to ask Chief Reed. Hold on, I'm ready to look at what we asked for.
So we're replacing older units. We have five more that are in the full-time police officer program.
We have a motion. And Mr. Williams, was that second? Do we have any questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Item is approved. Item H, board appointments. Are a couple of beerboard appointees that need to be reappointed or replaced. Mr. Williams, do you have someone in mind?
Yes, I do. I'd like to point on the beerboard Leonard Ezell. Fifty-two thirty Rose Street. Is this his name, Ezell? Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I haven't asked Mr. Wilson, but he's here. So I'll ask Mr. Wilson. Would you like to continue serving?
Yes, I think we need to kind of alert you of all we're going through right now.
Okay. Then, reappoint Mr. Wilson. And on the library board. It's apparently time for me to reappoint. Well, it seemed like it was just a very long ago. So I will reappoint Ms. Sarah Lambert. There are two new members per the new ordinance we adopted that will have to be added. That's ordinance number 1057.
Yeah, you have in the packet item 9H, the names that were your consideration for appointment. These names were given to me by individuals they call Erin Ripman, John Britt, and Betty Lemans. And the period that they would serve is one of them would be appointed to serve a term of 12/31/17 to 12/31/19. And the other one would be appointed to serve a period of 12/31/17 to 12/31/17. One would be for two years and one would be for three years. So you have to, whoever you appoint, you're going to have to designate which is a two and which is a three. And this would put us in alignment with the terms.
Sorry, what, seven?
I'm sorry?
Did you say seven?
You did.
I guess I'm talking about my age. One would be for 17 to 19, that would be two years. One would be 17 to 20, which would be three years.
We have three names here, so else, would you budge?
I'd like to put the motion on John Britt and Betty Lemans.
I'd like Erin Ripman.
Okay, let's. Just one minute. We had a motion. There's a couple of different ways we could approach this. One is by a motion, it's a second, there's a vote. The other is to simply do a tally of votes from the council for each person here. We, Mr. Cagle made a motion for John Britt and Betty Lemans. So is there any second to that motion? We did. We did. Two appointees. We can, well. Unless Mr. Cagle wants to withdraw his motion, we have to see if there's a second for that motion. That would be the
John Britt is the black guy that comes with the capsule, yes. And Betty Lemans, she's working the library.
I live in John. But I would love to see John here.
So going once, going twice on Mr. Cagle's motion. To do John Britt and Betty Lemans. Okay. Motion dies for later in the second. Do we have another motion?
Yes, we can do one that I know.
Right, and you can do it one at a time. And I would, before you do that, if you suggest a name, I would attach either a two-year term or a three-year term to that name. So that we don't have to do the appointees and then figure out which one we want to give which term.
John Britt, two-year term.
Okay, John Britt for a two-year term. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
There's a motion for Betty Lemans for a two-year, three-year.
There's a motion for Betty Lemans for a three-year term. Is there a second? I don't know Ms. Lemans. I received an email from Ms. Ripman.
That was first I've seen.
Yes. That's the first time I've seen her. It is. The proposed term for Ms. Lemans would be three years. Is there a second? And frankly, folks, I'm not for or against either of the remaining two because I don't really know either one.
Erin works for the East Ridge Developmental. Helps with the PTA up there. She comes down to pop the sun doors and things like that.
Okay. Last call, forty seconds on the motion for Ms. Lemans. There's no second. Is there?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a two-year term.
For your term.
I'm good.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ripman. At the roll call please.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the final item is item I. Well, before we move to that, Mr. Turner. Do we, does council, even though the other appointees are individual appointees, does the council need to bless that?
We should talk about
I'd like the two beerboard appointees. Those are, one is my appointee and one is Mr. Williams. Does the council need to do anything?
My recognition of the beerboard is just it's appointed.
Right, just for just an individual.
Confirmation has to be provided.
Right, just an individual member here appointed. Just wanted to make sure it would be at our bases. Okay, now to item I, discussion of increase in salary for the court clerk elected in the office of the member of July 18.
Okay, the last work session of October 26th was briefly discussed. The city council asked the city attorney to look into whether the court clerk was covered under the Tennessee State statute and render the findings to him. So I'll turn it over to the city attorney to address this topic.
That's correct. So I understood that the assignment last time was the question was asked, is this position of the city court clerk have to be an elected position or could it be an appointed position by this legislative body? My research indicated from Article 6 of the Tennessee Constitution that it makes clear that clerks of any inferior courts shall be elected by the qualified voters for the term of four years. And I took that and tried to research and I found two cases with regard, at least to the appointment or the addressing any form of a city court clerk. I did five of one. Found another that was applicable on one level, but it talked more about Article 13. But the short of it is that any charter or any provision that would provide otherwise since there could be an appointment, would otherwise be considered unconstitutional void because Article 6, Section 13 of the Constitution controls. So it has to be an elected position.
This item was before the city council because look at the salary of the court clerk. Right now, that position is, I believe, fifty-four thousand four seventy-two. And this would not necessarily be for Pat and Cass. This would be for the new, or for the court clerk. Should say new, maybe reelected. It would be for the court clerk position when they are sworn in office to begin their tenure on January of 2019. So this would, doing it now, so that those individuals who want to run for this position next year, 2018, the primary and the general election in November of 18, if you want to run for this position. Whoever wins that position will be entitled to that new pay. So if we do nothing, then the pay will stay at fifty-four thousand four seventy-two for the new person coming in in December, or January of 2018 for this position. That's the salary that they would have for that next four years, January 2019.
Does this cover insurance also?
Well, right now, she does get insurance now. She gets insurance like all the city employees because she's full-time. She's not a part-time employee under the Tennessee pension fund. She's entitled to, I mean, what's the position that's there? Be entitled to benefits.
Looks like this justice stays here much longer than that. We'll make it all time.
See you later.
I'd like to motion that request because this would jump at salary range of about ninety thousand dollars with the benefits. Everything's being asked for in this. Office folks put online, same retirement, pension, medical benefits, and any of the city employees living in prison.
Do you get, you don't get pension now?
I don't get anything like that.
No, but you get, does the city pay for your medical?
I pay for that.
Does the city pay for your base medical? Do you pay for all your medical?
Do I pay for all of it? No.
No.
Just treated as well.
You're treated like a city employee for medical.
There's no retirement whatsoever.
I'm sorry?
There's no retirement. I don't get anything.
No, you don't.
Whoever's in this position gets no retirement.
Right.
And when you're, I don't know where the ninety thousand comes from, okay? But I saved, okay, with this being an elected position in three years' time, I've saved, last year I saved almost twelve thousand dollars in overtime. This year I've saved almost fifteen thousand dollars that y'all would have paid other city employees in overtime, the overtime hours. When I took the job, I knew what the salary was, but I didn't know it's a twenty-four-seven job, which it is. I don't get vacation like other city employees do. I don't get any type of retirement. Nobody in this position does. And no one here on the council or anywhere else would be working full-time. I'm not like a council member that comes twice a month or a judge that comes once a week. This is a seven-day-a-week job, twenty-four hours a day, I'm on call. So, and no one would take a full-time job without some kind of raise or something to show that they're at least a little bit appreciated for what they do. I don't get a Christmas bonus. I don't get a raise like everybody else. I don't get anything. So, and I don't think this process was fully thought out when this first became an elected position because they didn't think of the amount of hours that's in time. I don't just sit back there. I do a lot of work as a lot of people can say because they've seen the work I do. And if a person comes in, if I decide not to run and the new court clerk. The one thing that bothers me the most is somebody coming in and ruining the changes, the good changes that I've done. This court is no longer what used to be considered a kangaroo court in East Ridge. This is a real court. And it starts from as soon as you walk back there in the back door. I changed the whole atmosphere and everything. We've got a good team. We work. And I work as hard, if not harder, than the girls that work for the city. And Hamilton County, I gave Mr. Miller of Hamilton County salaries for not only elected officials like Vince Dean, he makes a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. And last year he made a hundred and sixteen. So he gets a raise and he gets all Hamilton County benefits. He's an elected official. All the clerks down there, not one clerk down in Hamilton County makes less than sixty thousand dollars a year. And this is also a supervisory position. It's not just a clerk. You supervise the court. You supervise the employees back there. Even though they're city employees, I'm their supervisor. So all of that should be taken in consideration. And I also work as a magistrate. At nighttime, when they call me at two o'clock in the morning, if there's not a magistrate downtown, I sign warrants and set bonds and things of that. And my biggest fear is somebody coming in and just ruining every, all of the good that I have done for the city.
Unfortunately, that decision was made when they made a change.
I know.
And that
I know. And I will run again. I will run again because I'm proud of what I've done for the city. I take pride in what I've done for this court.
I think anybody deserves to make cost of living raise per se. It's not a raise I want to take for this mistastic.
No, it's for anybody that's
This would take a second.
This is not, this is not a raise for mistasting. This is a raise for the person who goes into the office January 2019.
Right. If I, even if I run, if I don't win, whoever comes into office would get that.
Exactly. The winner gets
So I'm not only fighting for myself, but I'm fighting for So, I'm not only fighting for myself, but I'm fighting for the next person because I know what this job entails.
I think it's a little unfair to say she makes fifty-four plus and then she gets her insurance benefits, so does everybody else that works for the city.
Right.
She gets the insurance benefits. She doesn't get the pension. She doesn't, she doesn't have an opportunity as a full-time person to contribute and or, and the city contribute for a pension. And, and one reason why is, it all depends on what this council decides. I mean, you have to have five year, you have to have five years working for the city under Tennessee Pension Fund plan to have vested pension. You have to have five years vested. And maybe that's one reason why they, they, they did, I don't know. But then again, once you put in, is what you would get back.
Right. And even if the pension, not even the pension, but all of you sitting up there, Mr. Cable, you included, have never worked at for a job where you didn't expect some sort of a raise or something to show that they appreciated you.
I'm not arguing with him.
Okay.
Not arguing with him.
I, I will say the county commission in Hamilton County, you serve four years. You're not vested, but if you, if you're- You get vested and you get so much money per year. For instance, Curtis Adams, he was there-
Once you retire.
Yeah, once you retire.
You have to retire. You have to retire, yeah, at each.
Well, Curtis served twenty-eight years and he does get money.
And I hope he served twenty-eight years. I need a glass of wine after this council meeting. I'd only get a wine.
Wine?
Give me a five. You can find me down at Camp Girard Lake over there. You can't. I'm glad that I better sit down.
I don't know how many folks remember the discussion from, what was that, 2012? When they called, meeting occurred on the day after Christmas.
Really?
Yes, at eight o'clock in the morning, the day after Christmas, when what had been decided by council to abide by the state constitution was ripped up, thrown out the window by newly elected council. There were a lot of things that we talked about at that time in regard to this position. And we had set up a special election so that we could abide by the state constitution. That was done way with. A lot of things took place that I personally was not very happy with. We talked a lot about what this position would entail. And it's my recollection that a minority of the council wanted to make it a higher paying position. So, these things were talked about thoroughly. And yes, I'm being very careful in what I say. I would be fine to increase the salary. Whether it gets raised to what has been proposed here, I don't know. But I, I mean, I would personally be fine seeing that at sixty thousand. And we did raise the, the judges paid. That was not for a specific person, but we did increase what the judges paid. And so, over time, I think it needs to happen, that you need to adjust. Adjust numbers up. Now, mayor and council make about, what, fourteen cents an hour if you break it down? Something like that.
Two ninety-nine.
But that's okay. And we, we do what we were signing up for. I'm going to stop there. I would be fine to, to raise, to raise the salary. Ultimately, council, you can decide whatever, whatever you want to do.
As you were saying, raise the salary to sixty thousand.
Yes, sir.
Make it with city insurance. No pension, no vacation.
Let me ask you this. Can you add pension to it if you pay your shift, if you're elected? Pay your, I'm here.
Wouldn't be retroactive, is what you're asking.
You can't make a retroact.
Well, that's how it works for the county if you're, if you're there four years on the county commission. And you run for another position-
Right.
Like assessor of property, that four years counts. Like, for example, Art Manning, once he serves for a year, he's vested, he's fully vested in the county commission.
Anything over, yes, anything over five years, you've got a vested pension.
But Art was already paid in the pension for the first four years.
No, he, he was, he was on county commission.
County commission didn't get any pension.
So, you have to five, five years, you have to be elected.
Oh, okay.
There's more likely her, she's-
In order for her to be able to-
In order for me to benefit with pension. In order for anybody.
I know, I, I understand that. The pension contributions that the city would make and that you would make would start January first of 2019. So, in whatever your view, your new term.
New term.
Your new term, you would start day one, January first, 2019. So, for you to get a pension, you would, you would, pension, you would have to be elected a second term or to have a vested pension. You still have to put in either the number of years and or reach the pinnacle of what that, that age limit is. I think it's sixty or sixty-two. I don't remember.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay.
Can, can I ask, quick, the, for like the county clerk positions or, or some of those others, how do they handle vacation? Is it, is it, they get a certain, a set number of days for vacation?
I don't, I don't know.
Right now, the city employees receive-
Now, he's talked about-
Like, like other, other clerks.
Right. As far as my knowledge, they take time if they want to. But they don't have, they have, they, the county clerks also have eight to ten clerks that work under that. I have Kathy, who's a deputy clerk, so I have one. So, her and I both can't be gone at the same time because there's no one else here to sign warrants and things like that. It's the police department in Pickle, where, who are we going to call? They have to go down. A lot of times, there's no magistrate there between nine and eleven at night and on the weekends and stuff. But downtown, they have magistrates. They don't sign warrants. I don't believe Vince Dean signs warrants. He doesn't act as magistrate where I do.
Give Kathy some warrants.
Kathy can sign.
So, in essence, if you, if you take time off-
I'm taking off, I'm taking off for, for Thanksgiving. I'm taking Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay, so Kathy has to work those three days.
She has to be on call to be a magistrate, to sign warrants.
So, you can't take vacation.
Yeah, I can, but I can't take, like, I never can take two weeks at a time or something like that. I would never do that. I wouldn't do that.
I really can't either.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Right, did you have a question? Yes, I have. I can do that for you. Fifty-four, four seventy-two, when was that put in place? Twenty thirteen? Is that what?
Do you remember when was that? Was that the second when you started?
Yes, correct.
The person before you, were they appointed?
No, she was, I don't know. You know how to do it.
That's why I mentioned a point. Somebody appointed a city manager, I guess.
No, I don't think so.
Until, until we've got a hard- Our wish was to get constitution.
Yeah, hard, it's hard.
All right, all right. I don't want to get into the story.
Let's fix it as quick as we can.
Okay, okay. So, fifty-four's been there for at least three years or so.
That's like four.
And in essence, it's been four years.
It was January, it was January twenty-fourteen.
I came into office September twenty-fourteen. So, yeah, September twenty-eighteen.
Over four years. So, in essence, second says the employees have received three percent raise this fiscal year, and a three percent raise for last fiscal year. I don't know what they got in the past few years. The last two fiscal years, they have received a three percent cost of living each year. Everybody except me. Am I in condescension?
Yes, sir.
Then, I think when we talked about this in our working agenda, we said that benefits would, as a rule of thumb, thirty percent, correct?
When I look at it as a point, I would ask the question, if a person gets a salary, what is the benefit cost of top of that? It's approximately thirty percent. So, if a person is making a salary seventy thousand dollars, the benefit package would be twenty-one thousand dollars more on top of that. That takes care of your, your leaves, your, your hospitalization, your, your medical, your pension, your, you know, all the other stuff that the employees get.
So, knowing she has-
But she had medical. I didn't know that she had medical.
I know that. That's where I'm going with this. So, that reduce that thirty percent, hang on.
It would because she doesn't get pension.
So, then if you factor in three percent for three years, you know, we're looking at, I, I'm definitely good with increasing, I'm going to concur with you. I know we have a little smoke floor, but I'm definitely in agreement with increasing salary.
I know, let me basically say, if you are, if you are in favor of increasing salary, you do not have to make that determination tonight what that salary would be. But I do feel that it should be done soon so that those individuals that are, that are thinking about running for the position know in advance of what that, what they're getting into.
And it actually has to be done. It has to be done before May of twenty eighteen.
Is it filed? Okay, May, is that filed?
It should be done before May.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And that's one reason why I'm doing it now, is to get it done before papers are picked up and things.
So, the salary needs to, let's say, but basically, the salary should be done by, should be decided on what it's going to be.
When you pick up, when you pick up papers, it didn't give a job description.
All it said, well, and that's another thing you may think about doing. Not just- You, you might think about tweaking the job description.
This is an elected position. There's, I'll tell you, if I wanted to run for sheriff, I don't know what the, I don't know what the job description of a sheriff is. It's going to be what I make it. That's an elected position. When you walk into that position as elected-
But they didn't know it's a twenty-four, seven job.
I didn't know.
Basically, the bottom line of it is, if you're going in, if you're going to become an elected position as a councilperson, as a sheriff, as a property praiser, as a treasurer, you need to read what the statutes say are your job responsibilities. If you didn't read that, shame on you. I'm just saying that that tells you all the things that you're responsible for. And, you know, that's your job description right there.
I did that. I did that. I didn't read what a court clerk was before I even thought about running. And because I have a paralegal certificate and I went to Baltimore, University of Baltimore Law School and things like that, I knew that I had the background. Plus, I've worked in courts and law for the last thirty-five years. So, I knew what I was doing when I came in. Otherwise, I wouldn't have run.
She, you didn't know how much the time-
I did not know the time that-
And that's the part of it, everything that, you know.
Okay, well, we've, we've talked about several things. Is there a motion currently on the floor?
I made a motion. I'll withdraw my motion.
I think that would be my preferred way forward. We know we've got a set deadline that we, we have to meet, but we can give it a little more thought. Maybe a, a consensus.
It has to be done before May. I mean, it's either April or May of twenty eighteen if that's what you're doing.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have it done by at least the end of January, to be honest, because people just don't, they think about when they're going to run for office. They just don't want, they wake up and say, I'm going to run for this office. Usually, people, like, first, they check with the family or... I watched my father do it, what he wanted to do, work on the man.
It's been a long time, but, yeah, truthfully, this is, this is the process. And sometimes it takes a long time.
And I just think-
Well, thank you to everyone that stuck it out this whole time. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.